Okay.
All right. Like to call the Planning Commission for the Town and Mechanist to order. First item on the agenda is review and recommendation of the Walnut Court Lot 104 revised subdivision application. Motion to recommend town. Okay, that's the what we do. Are you going to take over on this?
Yeah, I that oh, that might be Don. Don might be here.
Oh.
Let me see.
That's Don.
There you go. I was wondering who that was.
Don is Susan today, a boy named Sue.
There you go.
I I fixed you. Well, Don, do you want to present?
Um, I I certainly can. Um, I don't.
Not much to say. It's another one of these townhouse chop ups.
Yeah, it's it's just a. When we set the building and the contractor that did the footer squared the building, he's square. He moved it the wrong direction and we're over the building line, I think, by seven square feet on a four thousand square foot building.
Yeah. So so what Don's referring to is, um, you know, these these town home, you know, I'll call them town home chop up subdivisions where they've the original plan was already approved, but they've got to come back to divide the individual units up now that they're actually built. Um, the last one that we had was Lot 105 kind of flew through, you know, everything was fine. For the most part, everything is flying fine on this plan as well, except for that issue where the foundation on the one side ended up a couple of feet over the 100 foot setback line. So the zoning hearing board approved a variance to permit that that building to be a couple of feet closer to the typical 100 foot setback from another single family home district. Therefore, you can see on the engineer's letter on the group drop box that other than just a couple of formatting changes, this is now a clean plan. And that that couple of feet is okay.
Yeah, I had a letter dated January 28th. There were four minor comments. Now that the ZHP decision is made, they'll have to note that on the plan, they can do that before it's signed in by the town. And other than that, just a couple of little items to clean up.
Good.
Have a question. Hey, Don, is there some reason why you don't have a surveyor laying out your foundation plans in lieu of some guy with a tape measure? So you wouldn't have this kind of.
Yeah, it wasn't it. It was pinned. But the when they trench, they not apparently they knocked the pin out. And when he squared it, he, you know, he moved it the wrong way. So.
They didn't have an offset pin that said it's three feet from here?
Um, he he had pins, but you know, he didn't. Apparently, he didn't use them correctly or measure off of off of them properly.
Okay.
What's a little cut back there on Lot A, right by the road? What is that for?
I I apologize. I don't have a plan in front of me.
Oh.
One second, I can put it up on the screen.
It's an access easement.
For?
I just, there's open space there between the units.
Yeah, it says parcel A.
Yeah, partially.
But why? Why does it go along the road the way it does? You had it. There you go.
I gotta zoom it around. So sit tight while I move move some things.
There we go. That's good enough.
Um.
Almost where the little hand is.
This is what you're asking about.
Yep. It's on this one and the other, the other lot. I'm just curious what it's for.
Um, I I believe that's showing the parking area. There's a parking area between the buildings. I believe that's what that's showing.
That's, yeah.
It says access easement, but I don't know what it's. Okay.
Yeah, it's a it's a parking area, off street parking area.
Oh.
I believe it is.
Well, that court to the front. It's only nine and a half feet deep.
Yeah, that could check out. I mean, I I guess depending on how far out the parking area might sit, and this is a private street, so.
All right. Yeah, that's there. You go. You've got nine and a half, and then you've got another 10 feet. You got 12 feet to the pavement. So it's the parking areas are directly off of the pavement. So.
Okay.
He's showing he's showing the 50 foot right away, and then he's showing the additional nine and a half feet to get the 20 foot deep parking areas.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Sure. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Dan, John, Brendan.
Yep.
Greg.
Now, the only comment I I have is not with respect to the facility being built, but whether or not we want to have like, I I noticed that public comment is not listed as five after all these things. But yet last month, we seemed to take probably comment after each each one, and I thought that was a better idea. I thought someone was already doing their homework and getting us done right. So why don't you take a public comment after each one, which each one of these before we do a motion?
Yeah, to be clear, anytime there's a motion on on the agenda, the public comment, there's an additional public comment opportunity just cooked into the process, but we've been throwing that end of the meeting, public comment on there, just in case anybody wants to come and and, you know, speak about something that maybe wasn't on the agenda that month.
So you're saying that Ted will now call for a public comment, even though it's not written on the agenda?
Yeah, it has not historically been written on the agenda, and I think that's been your normal process, right, Ted?
Yeah, yeah, we always ask for it right after this, after the after the discussion from the planning commission. Kim, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Okay, is there any general comments from the public?
I don't have anyone in the public signed up. Um, it actually looks like everybody else on the call may be from the next present presenter. However, if that's not the case, type in the chat box now to register to speak or forever hold your peace. Not seeing anything yet.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, if there's no other comments, then could we have a motion to recommend town council approval?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend town council approve the preliminary final subdivision application for the Walnut Court Lot 104 revised plan.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Well, that went along pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye, Don.
Okay, bye now.
And just for everyone's information, I think I'm expecting another three of these over time to end up coming back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is to review the review and recommendation of the Dialysis Clinic Inc. Development, Lot and Block 611C and all so forth. Do you have? Are are those people here and ready to present?
I've I've got Kaylee on camera. Um, I believe that the other folks that she would like to speak if, you know, we'll pull them on camera as appropriate. Looks like I see them all turning their cameras on, so I'm sending the microphone request. Um, and just a procedural FYI, I had the first motion under the section listed as tentative. That was just because of the time that we put the agenda out, I was still waiting on the updated comment letter on the lot consolidation section, which we had just gotten an update from the surveyor shortly after I sent that out. So, you know, when we get there, we get there, but unless our engineer has any reasons that we don't want to recommend that, but recommend the separate site plan, I'm assuming that that motion will, you know, move forward, whether for or against. So anyway, you can ignore the tentative word on the agenda. It's the short version.
All right.
Other than that, Ted, if if you're ready for them to take it away, I I will let them.
Okay.
All right, Kaylee, you're on.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, we're back again. We were here last month to kind of present our concept or sketch site plan of our revised site plan that you had seen way back in October. So we're here tonight with a fully engineered site plan. It's been reviewed by Gateway, and we received comments on our submission. Um, so we're just here tonight to move the process along and and keep the ball rolling. With me tonight, I have Kayla Sloan and Ira Chilton there with the Architect Projects. And Patty Gottner is also here. She's with DCI themselves. Um, and they've been here for previous meetings, so you guys have interacted with them all before. Um, I know you've all seen the site plan before, so I will try and keep it short. I'll do my quick little spiel about DCI, and then I can go over the new site plan. RJ, I don't know if I can share my screen.
Now you can.
Okay, perfect. You guys see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so like you said, thank you, everyone. My name is Kaylee Bevington. I'm an assistant project manager with Bowler. I'm here on behalf of Dialysis Clinic, Inc. to present this application for land development. Kind of like RJ said, in tandem with the lot consolidation plan associated with this development. So Dialysis Clinic is a nonprofit service organization. They provide care to patients with end stage renal disease. Like I said before, they have clinics all over the country, including several in the greater Pittsburgh area. So we're proposing to develop this 2.14 acres of land located at 8443 Perry Highway. We're proposing to develop a dialysis clinic that's approximately 9,900 square feet. And the three parcels on the existing plan, I'll bring up here, they're proposing to consolidate those into one lot. Most of the site is currently undeveloped, except for a single family home. It's located up at this northeast corner of the site. We plan on demolishing that building. And then all that that's left else on the site is a gravel drive. The rest is vegetated or wooded. This project will include the installation of utilities, landscaping, and storm facilities associated that will support this redevelopment. The Dialysis Clinic will have 24 treatment stations, I believe. It will receive patients from both ambulances and personal vehicles, and the typical area, typical hours for this location will be 5:00 AM to 4:30 PM. So I'll go back here to my color rendering. This is a color rendering of the site layout. If you guys remember before, and we discussed this last month, we used to have a connection down to the Howard Hanna property. We've eliminated that connection. We've moved the building slightly closer to Perry Highway, and we've also eliminated any parking in front of the building that would be considered in with being within the front yard of the building, depending on how we were looking at that definition. Um, and otherwise, nothing has changed from what we presented in January. All we've done is flushed out the the site with full engineering grading, stormwater calculations, all that good stuff, so that it could get a full review by Gateway. Just kind of an overview going back. This is the site. This is the Google Maps image. You can see here the Howard Hanna property to the south, the woods, and then residential properties to the west, and then Perry Highway running along the east side of the property. These are color renderings of the elevations of the building. I believe we discussed this and had these at the January meeting. The architect will be happy to answer any questions you guys have about those. And this is the floor plan. Now, this floor plan is a little bit older because we have added a door on this side of the building to accommodate the accessible parking that we put on the north side of the building. So just so everyone is up to speed there. Yeah, everything else pretty much stayed the same. We have two drainage areas. The drainage area to the back goes to this underground detention system, which we are proposing to connect through the Howard Hanna property to a pipe system to convey the water back to the road that's back here. Originally, we were going to sheet flow over these residential properties. Gateway wasn't comfortable with that solution, so we worked with them to come up with an alternative. Howard Hanna has agreed with the elimination of this connection to allow us to cross their property and connect to a storm system. So currently, DCI is in conversations with Howard Hanna to make that agreement, to get that agreement in writing.
It looks like you're going to have to clear a lot of trees to put that line in? Or am I not seeing that properly?
Uh, I'm not sure that's exactly how it would end up panning out. I feel like we pull up the other exhibit. Our goal would be to impact as little on that existing site as possible.
Right.
But.
Do you have a drawing that shows where it connects at?
Yeah, let me pull up. Let me have an activity that I can pull up here. This is a little bit more zoomed out. So this exhibit here, this is the approved plan for the Howard Hanna development. I'm not sure when that was. I want to say it was like early 2000s. So you can see here, this is where their existing facility is. So we have to get around that facility, and that's what that's what pushes our line that far back. But part of the agreement between DCI and Howard Hanna would be to restore the existing conditions back to their current state as as close as possible.
So you guys will have an easement then?
Right.
Still looks like you're taking some trees.
That's very possible. I I can't say for certain. Um, I would have to get a survey of that area to see exactly how many trees would be impacted.
Yeah, Kaylee, uh, if memory serves, last time we were talking about how it would be rain garden style. But we wanted to see specifics about what the plantings would be. Is that is that something you're going to go over?
Uh, the yeah, the rain gardens in the front up in this area up here. I I I have the landscaping plan if we want to look at that.
Okay.
This is the landscaping plan for the property. So you can see we have this area hatched out to be plantings that are conducive to a rain garden or a wet environment that can withstand being submerged in water for periods of time.
Do you have? Do you have that defined as to what that is?
This these plantings here?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we would have to as part of our design. Let's see here.
Is that actually written there? Let me look at the materials.
I can't. I can't read it. It's too small for me.
It's too small?
Hey, you, your eyes are a lot younger than mine tomorrow.
My magnifier works just fine.
Magnifier.
All right, let's see.
I would imagine you'd be on this legend over here somewhere to start with, but then.
Let me let me see who can who can beat who there first, because I'm pulling it up too, so I can zoom in.
Yeah, I'm I'm maximizing my view here.
Just for a sidebar, Dan, is that something you guys review, the plantings, to make sure they're the right types?
Uh, there's, there's really nothing. I mean, the the ordinance prescribes buffers, Rob, but they don't necessarily prescribe plantings in in a rain garden. You can't look at them.
I just, I mean, make sure somebody with some knowledge besides me or more knowledge besides me, or really just, you know, a landscape person realizing that those are the right things to put in there in lieu of putting something in there that might look right but not last like we need it to.
Yeah, and just so to be clear, a part of our permitting process is also with the Allegheny County Conservation District, and they do look at the plantings. And we have to meet certain specifications to consider it a bio retention area or a rain garden. So they'll be looking at it as well.
But Kaylee, as it relates to the the buffer or the the rain garden, it it doesn't appear that there's any particular plants in there. It's all planted around. There's nothing else.
Yeah, I don't think we called for shrubs or anything like that. Um, I can, we could work with the landscape architect if if the town should felt that was necessary.
I think, you know, if you've got a landscape plan, I I was just thinking like, I was expecting to see what the types were. That's typically what we've received in the landscaping plan is the types of plants there, so we can see if they're invasive or nuisance plants or whatever.
Yeah, so all the all the different types, all the different types of species are are indeed on that C701. I mean, you're getting gonna have to pull the PDF out and zoom in a little bit.
It's hard for me to tell what you guys can like how on mine, it's big, but obviously I'm looking at a different screen.
And ultimately, I mean, our our actual buffer yard requirements speak more towards like big picture types of trees. So like canopy, evergreen, shrub, understory, those are the the types of trees that we call out. We don't necessarily have an approved list of planting species. But in this context with the rain garden, what I'm personally interested in, and like Kaylee referred to, should be included in general permitting process for the stormwater and probably PennDOT's going to get some eyes on it as well, since it's a there's they're going to need a highway occupancy permit. You know, they're recommending.
Yeah, I do see the types here. You've got, you know, bohull and green base or whatever.
Yeah.
I see ginkgo.
Yeah, I mean, I personally am not proficient in landscape or types of plantings, but I do know that the Conservation District is particular about invasive species. Um, so usually, uh, our landscape architect's pretty careful about using those types of plants.
Okay.
Are they deer resistant plants? Or are they the type that the deer go after, like the our providing?
I can't speak to deer resistance. I'm sorry. I can I can find out and certainly get that answer to you.
Um, excuse me, would it be helpful to the Planning Commission to ask the EAC to perhaps put together a list of those types of plantings that are all of these things that are native so that we can have have something like that? Would that be helpful if I ask if the EAC would be willing to put that together?
I think it would be, yes.
I would think so.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, under under, you know, but it would be most helpful if the classification or the different types of plants that, you know, if the EAC were to take on that project, if they could follow the different types of trees in our buffer yard and landscape planting code, which, you know, I'm happy to coordinate with them on. We can't necessarily compel a developer to pick specific species, at least, you know, under the current zoning code that we have. But, I mean, my experience has been, and I would certainly say the same for the DCI team, that, you know, they're they're willing to take suggestion if it makes the the town happy and it's not prohibitively expensive. So, yeah, that might.
I don't know.
It seems like it might be helpful to the developers to just have an idea. It it might make it just easier on everyone to say, here's a list of things we like, and if they don't care and it works, it seems like it might help everyone. If you're amenable to that, if you're not, it just seems like something EAC would be good at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael from my office joined. If if you're able to unmute him, I don't know if.
Oh, yeah, I sure can.
But he's actually the licensed landscape architect for this site, so he may be able to answer more questions. Or at least speak to what we typically do on a site like this.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, this Ted minored. Hey, uh, why? Why is everything pushed so far to the south on this property? Uh, you're right up against a downhill, very steep bank. You're you're within 10 feet of the top of it, including your rain, including your detention pond.
Yeah, we're kind of.
I was wondering why you you pushed it so far to the south when you have another 40, 50 feet to the north to do something with?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things at play here. Obviously, we have steep slopes kind of on all sides, so we're a little bit pinned in on where we can be. The other issue at play here is our HOP, the highway occupancy permit. They wanted us to push everything to the south as much as we could to get our driveway entrance as far away from the sheets as as possible. So those two factors really drove the placement of this site, along with the building being placed on top of the the current existing ridge that's on site. So that usually makes sense, the most sense grading wise, to put your building on that center part and then balance your earthwork around the building, if that makes sense.
Well, I I look at the detention pond, and I see it, you know, 10 feet from the top of the slope, and that slope is probably 12, 15 feet, something like that, down to Howard Hanna. And it just seems like you're setting yourself up for a little catastrophe there, unless that soil was awfully good.
Yeah, I mean, that facility isn't really holding a large amount of water for an extended period of time. It's designed to infiltrate the water to the ground and then outlet directly into the Perry Highway system. But I I understand what where you're.
If if it would, if it would, if we had a huge flood and it would go over the top of the bank, where would it go?
It would go down onto Perry Highway.
Is it lower on that side?
Yeah, Perry Highway would be lower here.
I mean, up 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 here, I can. I don't have any pointer, right at the edge of your, whoa. You know.
Is the banking on the east side lower than the banking on the south side?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, the the emergency spillway situation would direct the water towards Perry Highway rather than the neighboring property.
Okay.
So what you're saying is it would hit the emergency spillway long before we would have to worry about actually overtopping the pond?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and yeah, best practice would be for us with our grading plan and stormwater design to direct the water to Perry Highway where it could enter a conveyance system. We we would not want to direct the water towards the Howard Hanna property.
Do you have a lighting plan for us?
I do.
Everything okay there, RJ?
I don't believe there was anything called out on the comment letter. Let me go back to it just to make sure.
C703 for reference.
The lighting plan was adequate. It met the common, the requirements of the ordinance, RJ.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't see anything called out on that at all. I mean, it looked, you know, when I glanced over it, it looked okay.
Okay, just so you're still don't have your HOP, is that correct?
Right, it's it's in process with our traffic engineer and PennDOT.
Has it been submitted? I mean, have you had your review meeting and gotten comments?
We had a.
Where are you at?
There was a scoping meeting. We have not received comments back yet on the actual permit itself.
Okay, so that's still an unknown.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it would be technically unknown. Our traffic engineer and PennDOT did not express any outward concerns about not being able to permit this driveway.
Okay.
Especially since there was an existing driveway there, and we're eliminating a driveway also.
Yeah, but. I was gonna say, the volume of traffic out of that driveway is not even.
Oh, no, understood, understood. Yeah, that's why we have to have HOP.
There was a curb cut, but that the traffic volume is not typically, they're not the same. But go ahead.
Yeah, so in the initial meeting with PennDOT, there was, uh, PennDOT did not express concern about being able to permit this, that their only request at the time was that we bump our driveway as far south as as we could. And so, um, the traffic engineer and PennDOT are still coordinating on that. I don't think we've gotten any formal comments back on the actual permit yet.
Okay. And then I have one other question, but go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. My other question, my other question was. My other question, my other question was, uh, can you go over the retaining wall that's in the northwest corner? Uh, what, what exactly is going on there? It looks like there's a two-step system going there or what's happening there?
Yeah, that's correct. So, um, as part of the, the township code, you can't have a retaining wall taller than, I believe it's five feet. That's my grading plan.
Six feet.
Three.
Six feet. I think five, um, if you're down to five feet, you don't have to have a fence, I think is maybe where we ended up with the five feet. So because we are over even six feet, we had to do a tiered retaining wall. So we have one that goes this whole length here. So that this goes from zero up to five feet in the center and then back down. And then we have a second retaining wall to pick up the remainder of the elevation change.
There, is it guard rail? It looks like there's a running across there.
Yes, although that was something that came up in the comment letter with Gateway, so I think that will be switched to fence.
Oh, really? What, Dan, what's the issue? I mean, I, I kinda like the guard rail, cause then if somebody accidentally only hits the gas instead of the brake, they're not taking a smoky and abandoned leap.
I think we're deciding what's required in the, uh, grading ordinance, which would be, uh, the re, the, uh, the fences required, uh, but they could ask for a modification on the fence. And if planning commission feels better with the guide rail there, I have no problem with that.
I, I, I'm just, I mean, I, I s- like I said, somebody hits the gas instead of the brake, it's a long way down, it looks like. But I don't know what you guys think about that idea or not.
I mean, is there any kind of curb or like a curb height or anything though?
There is a curb. That's all curved along there, yeah. We could probably do, we could keep the guide rail. I don't think there's any issue on our end with keeping the guide rail. Um, the fence requirement, now that I'm thinking about it, goes back to the buffer yard requirement, so, um, but Gateway did give us the option of making an argument for the dense vegetation in this area, making up for the fence. So maybe we would just have fence along this corner until we hit the guide rail. We could do something like that.
Yeah, is that wedge curb or is it concrete curb?
We're proposing concrete curb.
Okay. That would make a difference, Jonathan, you're right.
Is the, well, is the concrete curb in a position where, uh, it would hit the wheels of the car and the front head would not hit the fence or guide rail?
Yeah, we, we would place it, I think it's, I wanna say it's two feet. I would have to double check, um, to allow for the car overhang.
Okay. We can kinda, on this plan, you can kinda see what I mean by having all that, uh, grading down at the south end of your, your site. So it, I mean, it's just a really steep slope there. That would make me nervous. I don't know. Okay.
I have a question. What is the material of the retaining walls that are gonna be built? And, and actually, I'm looking at the aesthetics of it in, when viewing it from down below. What is it gonna look like?
Um, I believe there'll be segmental block retaining walls.
Which kind of block?
Like segmental block, um, the, it's not, those are probably the most aesthetically pleasing of retaining walls that you'd be thinking of, you know, versus like cast in place or something like that. Um, they're like the decorative, you can get different.
Like a Versa Lock.
Yeah, Versa Lock would be, I mean, manufacturer example.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Ed, would you like me to go over my comments?
Yes, I would.
Okay, um, I, I wanna highlight some things to the planning commission. Uh, I have a letter dated January twenty ninth. Uh, we got the revised site plan in and I got comments back out to Bowler, uh, as it relates to the, um, to the, to the access with the access management here with the RC District. Uh, they are required to make connections, uh, to the north and the south. Uh, as, uh, Kaylee pointed out, that they would like to eliminate the, uh, southern access to the Hannah property. And I think in reality, based upon the way they're laying the site out now, they show an easement on a plan, but it's really not feasible to construct that access because I think, Kaylee, I, I looked at it, it's, it's almost like a two to one slope up to your parking lot.
Yeah, it's pretty steep.
Yeah, so if you can point on the pointer, I don't know if you have control of the pointer, what I'm talking about.
Are you down at this one here?
Yeah, that little area there is, you know, I, 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 I think we're fooling ourselves if we think there's, there's access between these two properties. And I think this was, I, I mean, it was, it was kind of established the way Hannah was graded because they created the, 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 uh, cut slope in their hillside there, and now it leads up to this next plateau. So, again, I, I would recommend that, that the applicant make a, a request for a waiver on this one. But on the north side of the property, I think it's pretty clear that they can, they could, uh, create an access to the properties further to the north. If you wanna zoom out of there, Kaylee, kinda roughly show where that access to the north that they've shown is up in this area, you can see that the contours are pretty, pretty spread out. And it appears that that access can be created. So, um, I just wanted to highlight that and, uh, I, I think that if, if we are, if everybody's in agreement to that, I think they, they at least need to show uh, that easement on the, uh, on the recorded plan because the land development plan really won't suffice as a legal document to allow the town to, to require that in the future. So I'd prefer that that be put on the, uh, the recorded plan with a note that I've outlined in the letter. So.
That would, that would be, that would be the right thing to do, Dan, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I will chime in here and say, you know, I'm, I'm the first one to really try and promote multimodal connectivity, but as Dan described in, in the letter and here, you know, the topography has converted me. Um, I, I don't think that, you know, at least on the south end, that there would be a realistic, you know, that, that would be a burden and maybe not necessarily beneficial to the topography of, of the two sites. Um, but you know, we can at least have the north end in our back pocket, should the uses change to be complimentary.
So then, uh, moving along, I think the other, the other issue the planning commission should be aware of and chime in on is the, the buffer yard. Uh, Kaylee, I might correct that you guys, if you wanna go back to your landscaping plan, you're providing a buffer to the residential properties, but it stops, as you move into the denser vegetation.
Yeah, that's correct. This is all pretty densely wooded here.
I, I would agree, having walked the site, uh, my request to the applicant would be that they make that request in writing and they provide justification that the buffer is sufficient uh, to, to substitute for the buffer that, uh, that, that, the, uh, planted buffer that they're proposing for the balance of the, uh, of the property to the, uh, to the west.
What about plantings in between the two walls, Dan? On this, uh, landscape plan?
Looks like they have, looks like they have.
To soften that upper wall.
I, I, I have no problem with that if that's a recommendation. Uh, typically though, wh- the problem with those walls is they require a, uh, a fabric that gets pulled back underneath the surface.
Right.
Excavating in those areas can be difficult, um, like along that slope side. Uh, i- if they were gonna do anything, I think, I think the biggest advantage of the, of any plantings would probably be at the base of the wall to at least protect the property owners downhill. But really, based upon my field walks out there and seeing where those other residential properties lie, those homes, it's gonna be very difficult topographically for them to even see the back of this wall. They won't because they sit down so far down onto, uh, the, the, the street down there.
Okay.
So, I, I, I think the natural vegetation, the natural vegetated buffer would be the best, you know, to, the least disturbance there, the better. Uh, the ability to, to, you know, maintain plants on that slope side might be difficult anyway, uh, in the wall area. So, uh, it's my recommendation that they, that they make the, uh, the request for the modification if they can provide the justification.
Yeah, we, we would be happy to do that.
Uh, let's see, we, uh, we had some remaining comments on the stormwater. I think that they're pretty close on that. Uh, we just asked that they, uh, much like the planning commission pointed out that they, if they're going in this direction with the stormwater, they, they need to base this plan on the real existing conditions out there so we can see what's going on as opposed to, uh, uh, using the old plan that was prepared for Hannah, just the photograph. So, so Kaylee, I assume if, if you get the nod on this, or you know, you, you're gonna go ahead and, and do more work to kinda define that off-site sewer?
Yeah, yes, we, yeah, we would have to have it all tied in.
Okay, um, they, they did supply us with, uh, information related to the, uh, traffic and, uh, they're making the application for the HOP. They did supply a geotechnical report. Uh, one of the things that we noted in there is that they, there's a couple of things that they need to consider. There are some red beds that were exposed in the borings. So I think they need to take that into account in their, in their design and their wall design and their site design.
Where would that be, Dan? Do you know?
I, I can't recall exactly what elevation it was, but.
Well, I meant on the site, uh, is it throughout the site or just in certain parts?
It's just in certain parts.
I mean, is it in the northeast, northwest corner or the southeast or what it, what would it be?
I'm gonna ask Michael or Kaylee to chip in on that one too. I don't, I didn't study the borings.
Yeah, I, I, I'll be honest with you. I didn't, I don't know the specific, the specific location, um, of where that was encountered. I, I, I would say the, the one thing that works in this favor is we don't have any, we don't have any fill slopes that we're really creating, uh, of any significance, which, which should help alleviate, um, any potential encountering with red beds. I do agree the walls, if they are in, in particular areas, um, there would need to be some additional consideration in there. Uh, I do know that the, in the area of the retaining walls, the, the, the bores there, uh, did not show any of the colloquial material. Um, it was really firm material, uh, in that, in those areas on that existing grade, um, which all bodes well for the, the construction of the walls and then supporting of the rest of that on that particular corner of the site. I know from a geotechnical standpoint, from a, from their investigation and their recommendations, um, we're really don't, we don't really envision anything on this site needing any extreme, uh, measures to be put in. Uh, again, you know, obviously there will be care, uh, with onsite inspection when materials are being placed and excavation is taking place, but we really don't have a lot of cut and fill slopes on this site, so.
The layman, would someone describe a red bed?
It's just a slippery clay that can be encountered in the, um, in the mechanicalis area on different sites.
Okay, that's what I was suspecting, but thank you.
It's extremely slippery. It, it's almost like grease at times. Entire hillsides have come down because those, those red beds have been exposed.
Exposed and gets wet.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we, we've asked them to provide some additional information back on their geotechnical report to substantiate that. I, I, RJ asked me if these were, um, if these were, anything was, was of major concern here. I, I do agree with Michael that, that they can address these issues. They just need to do a better job in the report and identify it. We've been requiring on all grading plans that, uh, they include notes on the plan that require geotechnical inspection and certification at the completion of the project. And we've been following through with that on a number of projects over the years, uh, just to avoid, uh, any issues. And, and I'm, I'm sure that the developers planning to use geotechnical inspection here anyway. Uh, but, but it is a requirement and we'll include that in the, uh, in the developer's agreement. So a lot of times the geotechnical issues are, I mean, you only take, you only take core borings that are four inches in diameter and you put them in a couple holes through the site and then you have to come back. And the reality is when you open the whole thing up, there has to be a lot of engineering decisions made in the field, and that's why it's so important to have the inspection out there.
Absolutely.
Uh, other than that, uh, just on general comments, uh, there, there was a request for a waiver regarding the, um, the ordinance, uh, related to infiltration facilities, at least being twenty feet from all subgrade structures. Kaylee, you wanna explain that a little bit further?
Dan, that one actually doesn't apply anymore. That applied to our original layout, um, that had a bio retention area on the north side of the.
Okay.
But we eliminated that, so that actually, we don't need that waiver anymore.
You don't need it. Great, okay. One, one less.
Yeah.
Still need the three to one on the pond, correct?
We did design this with the three to one interior side slopes, yes, to maximize the, uh, bottom square footage of the facility.
So you'll need a modification from four to one?
Yeah, yes.
And they, they've made that request. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you can cut grass, uh, in three to one slopes. Um, I'm not sure why, where the four to one came from. It's in our ordinance. We are looking at upgrading the, uh, this, the, uh, stormwater ordinance to address some of these things that seem to come up on every project. So I, I, I don't have a problem with that, uh, request for modification. And then there's the, um, just all the standard items that they still need to obtain third-party permits, including their MPDS permit, their HOP permit, approval by the sewer authority. Um, I don't know, has, has Dan Stack reviewed the latest plan or has he seen the latest layout, Kaylee, the fire, the fire marshal?
No, he has not seen the latest plan, so we can coordinate with him.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get an extra. Um, usually what I do for the revisions, since, you know, you don't know when you're done revising until you're done. I try to kill a few less trees and not have them send full paper copies, um, unless we need one. So Kaylee, I can coordinate with you to get, uh, Dan a, not, not this Dan, other, we have a lot of Dans in this situation. Dan Stack, the fire marshal.
Yeah, I think, cause I think you sent our original submission to the sewer authority as well. So we'll have, we'll have to, um, you and I can coordinate on getting those back in for review.
Okay.
So, so in summary, I, I, I think they've made substantial progress in, in moving the ball forward. We've gotten a lot more information. A lot of things have been, been corrected. Um, there, there still are some things that need to be cleaned up. So, um, it's really the planning commission's call. If you feel comfortable moving this one forward with the contingencies listed in my letter at least.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anything else you have on there?
I, I don't have anything else.
Did, did, um, was there any particular comment you had for the lot consolidation plan? Or since those are two separate motions, um, is that one good to go?
My, my letter, my letter covers, uh, five comments on the consolidation plan.
None of these look terribly.
No.
Concerning.
They're, they're nothing, there's nothing crazy there. We just need to clarify those easements that the sewer authority has. Cause they're, they're kind of in the way of building things, so. Have you guys had any discussion with them, Kaylee?
We had an early on discussion with them on our original site plan, so we need to go back to them with this modified one and finalize those conversations.
Yeah, I think those are on the, those are on the portions of the line that, that are no longer needed. They dead-ended up into the site.
Right.
So it's making those kind of old easements go away.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just would wanna make sure if they're, if they're legal easements, um, I'm a lot an attorney and I don't, I don't claim to be one, but somehow I think there has to be some act by the municipal authority to to actually officially abandon those easements. You just can't show them abandoned on a recorded plan.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree, Dan. They, they.
Are they shown on your existing plan? On your, uh, existing survey?
They're on the consolidation plan.
They're on here.
We show them here as to be extinguished. It's this ten foot easement here. They're probably for the residential.
We, we do have an attorney here, so, Mr. Corville. Opinion on the, the easement extinguishing.
Yeah, sure. I mean, yeah, Dan's right, they're.
Yeah, sure. I mean, Dan's right. There, you would have to file paperwork with the county recorder. It's extinguishing those easements. So yeah, there is an extra step. You can't just write a letter and say, nope, these don't count any longer.
I see another that says property line to be extinguished. That's, that's, okay, that's the horizontal line. What are these, what are these dotted lines?
Um, I believe those are soil types. Yeah, those are from the U S G S Soil Survey.
Ted, are you looking at the setbacks?
No, I'm looking at the lines in the middle of the property.
These lines here.
Oh, there, okay, yeah. All right. There are a lot of dotted lines involved here.
I know.
Yeah, these just delineate soil classifications on.
Oh, okay. So you have two on the left and one on the right? One big one on the right, two smaller ones on the left?
Your surveyor could probably turn those off. They just, they're confusing and add nothing to the consolidation plan.
Yeah, this is just our existing conditions plan.
Okay.
The lot consolidation plan was actually prepared by the surveyor. So, but I think, I, I think.
I'm, I'm confused. You're showing, you're not showing a consolidation plan. The consolidation plan doesn't show those, Ted.
Yeah, these are, this is our existing conditions plan. Those soil classifications are required for M P D S permitting.
Do you have the consolidation plan?
I don't have the most recent one that was submitted. RJ, I don't know if you have it.
I've got it. If you want to unshare your screen, I can, I can put that bad boy up. All right. Let me see. Is that working for everyone?
Yes.
Yeah.
That should get the whole site.
There we go. How many lots are there? Three?
I think.
Yeah, I believe it's three lots.
Yes.
Consolidated to one.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. I think most of the comments on the lot consolidation were administrative for the most part.
Correct. You know, just, just with the, just with the caveat that, you know, related to the sewer easements that the only thing that I'm, I'm concerned about is that, you know, there would have to be reference to some action by the sewer authority to show that on this recorded plan before it's actually filed.
Yeah, I was gonna, I would say the same thing, Dan. You would have to vacate those easements before you can consolidate and record them, record this as a new plan, I would think. If you're, if you don't want them to show.
Or you don't do anything with them. You just show them the way they are and then you come back and vacate them by another instrument, too.
That's what I was gonna, if, we wanted to move lot consolidation for it, I'm sure we could have the surveyor remove that showing of them being abandoned or extinguished.
Well, I think we would, I think it'd go the other way, Kaylee. We would approve it, contingent upon that.
That's why we can do that, too.
Mr. Corville, I don't know how you think it should be done, but.
Yeah, you can do that for sure. As long as it's a contingency, it has to occur before anything can be filed or formalized. So yes.
So if in theory, this lot consolidation was to move to the council round, perhaps the contingency that the planning commission might want to attach is to have the sewer easement extinguishing addressed before final approval.
I don't think you'll get that in a week.
No, but this plan won't, won't be on the council agenda for voting in a week. So they have some time.
How much time is that, though? Means that, that might, this could take months.
Yeah, it, I mean, it could. If that's something that you want to attach on there, then we can just keep getting extensions to hold it out. Or, you know, council can say this plan is approved contingent on ya da, 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 and then we just. So that's.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I would think you would do. You would keep moving it along and then you wouldn't be able to sign it and record it until that was officially, until you had the paperwork that showed that that was officially gone.
So the, the contingency recommendation would be to basically just carry that contingency forward to the council approval?
Yeah, then they can decide how they want to go with it, but they could, they could approve with the same contingency and then Dan and everybody else who signs off on that drawing before it goes to the county wouldn't be able to sign it until that was, that, that contingency was met or, you know, addressed.
Right.
I would concur that council would want to continue, continue the condition, if you will, if it hasn't been extinguished by the time it council considers. Also, and I think, and maybe Dan knows, I think it's 90 days. The county won't accept the plan if it's been more than 90 days. Maybe you know, RJ.
We have, it, it is, but we have this special little stamp that we can slap on there. Yeah. We're well versed in that thing.
It has a special stamp.
I also think you can, I, I've also wanted, doing it, the, the only way that it really gets caught up at the county is if the date that the signature is on the plan, it surpasses the 90 days. So if they conditionally approve it, it's technically not, doesn't start that 90-day clock until the signatures and the date are put on the plan. That's been my experience.
Yeah, I think you're right, for sure.
Yeah. We had a few closings on various subdivisions that were extremely held up by COVID. So, yeah, we've, we've had to deal with that a few times, but we'll be okay one way or the other with that, with that issue.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, you said you had some people who, who came to make some comments, RJ?
Uh, well, there, I didn't see anyone from the public on. There were just, yeah, just several different, oh, here, I'll stop the screen share, members of the D C I team that were on hand. Unless, again, if there's anyone that I'm mistaken and is indeed a member of the public that would like to make a comment before the planning commission makes a motion, name and address in the chat box. And we'll give it a couple of seconds while I make some notes.
I do not see anything.
Nobody responded?
Nope.
Okay, well, I'm certainly not a fan of this plan, but I'm not gonna hold it up. So I, I don't think it, it, I don't think it blends with the other four sites leading up to it at all. But be that as it may, I guess we'll, we'll continue with it. Is there anyone who, we, is there any reason for us to put this on hold? RJ?
Uh, I definitely, I don't have an issue with the lot consolidation plan with that contingency recommendation addressed. That's very easy. I've got a note on that. Um, when I was reviewing this with, with Dan, engineer Dan, he, you know, we were kind of in agreement that everything that's addressed in, in the engineer's letter is something that just needs, you know, a little bit of tweaking or more information on the geotech, but there isn't anything that resolving these comments would cause the site to change so significantly that what would be on the plan is not essentially what's in front of the planning commission today. It's zoning compliant. There are just some design issues that need to be worked out. So I would not stop the planning commission from moving forward with this plan tonight.
Okay. In that case, unless there's some other comments, is there a motion to recommend approval?
I think we have to do the lot consolidation rate as one motion, Ted.
Oh, that's true. Okay, motion to recommend town council approve the lot consolidation application known as the Dialysis, Dialysis Clinic, Inc., Dixon Lot Consolidation. It's hard for me to say for some reason or other. So, okay, is there, is there a motion to do that?
I moved the motion.
Second?
Yep.
Who made second?
I'll second it with the contingencies that RJ had mentioned.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Then there's the motion to recommend town council approve the Dialysis, Dialysis Clinic, Inc. For some reason, I'm having trouble with that. Land development application contingent on the approval of the associated lot consolidation plan.
That, that, the contingent on the approval section is just optional in case for some reason it was not ready tonight. So you are permitted to make the motion without the contingent.
Without the contingent on the approval of the associated lot, okay.
Oh, we will make a contingent upon gateway resolution of the issues that Gateway has.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, that?
Yeah.
I cover all the waivers in there, Rob, too. There's some waivers that are.
Okay, so you, so the contingency now would be on resolving the issues in the gateway review.
The waivers, are they, are they granted by town council?
Yes.
Okay, so he has, they don't have to go to zoning hearing board?
No, there, this is, they would not be up for a vote if they were not okay, at least on the zoning hearing board front.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion? Did you make the motion, Rob?
I will, no, I don't want to be monopolizing the motions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, hey, we got a new person in the group. All in favor? Opposed? That's me. Okay.
Okay, so, so, hold on for record keeping. On the lot consolidation, we were seven oh. On the site plan, we were six one.
That's right.
Okay. And I will put in my report to council that the plan contingency that the recommendation was pursuant to the comments in the engineer's letter being addressed prior to approval.
Right. And did H, I mean, do you have H O P in that, Dan? I assume?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of your letter, too. That's fine.
And for, just for everyone's, you know, benefit of knowledge, although we haven't had too many major developments come through this year since I've been here, what I have started doing is compiling like a more unified staff report for town council that lists all the modifications or waiver requests if there were any contingencies when the planning commission discussed them. Incorporates the engineer's letter and any comments on there. And, you know, any other sort of wrap-up things that I might have from a planning perspective. And those are all incorporated into, you know, the staff report for such and such project. And then the recommendation to town councils that they vote on the motion incorporating all of that into a contingency. So if you all are following the agendas at town council and you see something like that, what's included in the staff report and engineer's letter, all of that is covered in the council approval as well. Sort of just as a, a form for how we write the motions now.
Okay. I guess that's it for that particular item.
It, it is. All right, contingent.
Item number three.
I just, I just wanted to say thank you for, for all the help working through this and we look forward to moving ahead. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Take care.
All right, have a good night, folks.
Okay. Item number three, discussion of R C District front yard zoning regulations.
Yes, okay. Uh, did you all, I put that in the Dropbox packet. Did anyone have an issue retrieving it? Because if so, I can put it on the screen.
I did.
It's quite short.
Turn on the screen, that'd be helpful.
Give me one second to actually pull up that PDF and close all of the plans and then I'll be good to go there. Don't mind my file name of from Ted, was gonna get lost in my folder if I didn't preface it with that. Well, how, how would you like to discuss this?
Well, let me just give them my interpretation and then we can discuss it, so. This is relating really to the project we just looked at. And there seemed to be a difference of opinion as to what the front yard was and what was allowed in it. So consequently, I thought we ought to clarify that. Cause we are in this R C district, the whole idea of the R C district was to try to make some of these buildings blend in with some of the residential buildings that are still there. And to give the place a more uniform look. So what I was suggesting was, under lot area adjacent to the front street, no vehicular parking is permitted within the area between the front edge of the building and the front access street serving the building lot. And the area between the front edge of the building and front access lot shall, shall be a grass lawn with required buffer planting. This area shall not be used for any other purpose such as stormwater detention facilities. The intention is to have this grass area look like a residential yard. And then as far as building placement was concerned, again, trying to get some uniformity up Route nineteen, I said the front edge of the building shall be positioned between 35 feet from and 50 feet from the front lot line. And then I just threw this last one in, which was delete this section, which was under materials. It was to delete final siding and aluminum siding. So, comments?
I agree with that one, the thirteen twenty-eight point zero nine C two A eight, I agree that should be deleted. Uh, but on the comments, I have, currently, the the zoning code provides a provision under thirteen twenty-eight point zero three for the front yard. It says no vehicle parking is permitted within the front yard. And then thirty-five foot, thirty, thirty-five foot front yard shall be grassed and landscaped. So I would just, just take out of the, that, that provision, the thirty, I would just take out thirty-five foot and it's, then just say the front yard shall be grassed and landscaped. Uh, because really you have to look at, you have a definition in the definition sections as to what a front yard is. And, you know, and it would seem to be, we would want to keep that there. We, we're not want to start putting a, a, a different, different definition of, of permitted in an area between the front edge of the building and the front access street serving the building. So I don't see why would you, you would want to do that when you already have a definition in the code.
Yeah, I, I will say that the point of confusion, at least for, you know, when we were reviewing this plan, was the fact that in one of those sections, it calls out that there's no parking in the thirty-five foot front yard. And so.
Problem, isn't it?
Yeah, I think everybody just kind of read that and thought, oh, well, maybe, maybe the implication is that the parking is only blocked in, in the, the first thirty-five feet. So, you know, we certainly learned. Lamar, give me one second. I'm finding you in my list of attendees here to unmute you. But so anyway, I mean, I, I think that at least for, for Dan and I, that was clarified through, through this review process, but I agree with Greg that we don't necessarily want to reinvent the definition here.
Well, the, the only thing that I would say is they consider the the retention pond as landscaped. And when we say the thirty-five foot front yard shall be grassed and landscaped, they consider that landscaped. And I don't, I don't consider a retention pond as landscaped.
Let, let me talk to that for, for a second. We put addition on this house we're currently in at the front and, and we had to put a retention pond in. And really, the only really realistically air area that we could use was, was our front yard. Now, it's been with, with, my wife has landscaped it and it looks, it, it literally looks great. This yard, our yard is considered one of the top yards in the area. And so if, if the landscaping's done right, it definitely can be a fit. And retention, the retention facility, it would tie, it ties in our, our our spouts, our grounds, our roof, our roof sprouts into the retention pond.
Right.
And, and so.
Do you actually have a pond or do you have a something?
Well, we have a, a, a retention pond, no, retention facility. We built it underground. It. We built it underground, it, it, the, the, uh, ground, the, uh, uh, spouts. Uh, enter into it and, uh.
You have a residential, uh, uh, situation usually where they dig a hole, they fill it with rock and then they cover it over with, uh. With dirt and grass and so that it doesn't look much different than your regular grass, isn't that right?
Right.
And that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a, an actual pit. That is landscaped and gets filled up with water from time to time, and there's only certain types of plants that will live in it. And it rarely gets taken care of very nicely, let's put it that way.
So here's, here's kind of my view on this issue in general is, uh, it, it sounds like. Over the years in various locations, the retention or detention ponds that we have had developers implement. Around town have been taken care of, not as well as maybe we would like. And, you know, that may go to an issue of nobody knows who owns it, you know, even though it's usually the H O A. Maintenance responsibilities, maybe there's a lack of clarification for the people that run the H O A. You know, not speaking in any specifics, just in general, how do we get to the point where we're having this, this concern? Because I've noticed that we have a lot of discussions about stormwater being ugly, um, and it doesn't have to be, hopefully. Um, my concern in this district especially, but just kind of with the way stormwater and water management conversations are going in general. Um, is that, you know, Pen- Pennsylvania really has a water problem. Um, it just, it is what it is when you develop something that has a ton of different little streams and creeks and. You know, the water's going every which way to all the different, uh, watersheds, long term, um. In a situation like the development that we just reviewed, ultimately the stormwater was being placed in the front because it mimicked the existing conditions of a lot. Um, and I would hesitate to recommend any piece of zoning code. That limited a developer's ability to mimic the existing conditions of a lot. Um, or to find the best engineering solution, whether it's attractive or not. That can partially be resolved through the planting plan and the O and M stormwater, the operation and maintenance agreement. Um, and the other half of that is just really a code enforcement issue. Um, so. I understand the concern. But I think that a, a really big development issue for us right now is making sure that it's, is, is straightforward as possible. To do what is safest for the watershed. And sometimes that means putting it in the front, you know?
Well, I think you're looking at this, though, just from the point of view of a single lot. I mean, we have four lots adjacent to this that were all developed according to the way we, that hoped they'd be developed. And all of a sudden, we have this one lot. That the developer just certainly refused to develop it in, in accordance with the other lots. Uh, he could have reduced the heights of the lot to some extent. He could have turned the building, uh, the other way and brought it out towards the, uh, the street. He could have done a lot of things. He could have put the, um, the retention pond back from the street a little bit. But he didn't do any of that stuff and, and we're sort of giving him a pass on it, in my opinion, because he's doing a dialysis clinic that everybody likes.
Ted, didn't sheets do the same thing?
You know what? I, I never noticed, I don't remember us ever discussing the fact that they had a, uh, a, a pond out front. It's a real small pond. I remember the, the.
I remember Lamar asking about gas going into it.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, uh, discussion on sheet seemed to center forever around the, uh, the residents, uh, adjacent to it.
Right.
But regardless of what sheets did, that doesn't mean that, you know, that should give somebody else the opportunity to do something. Like that also, in my opinion.
Well, I, I was favoring the, uh, the, uh, retention area that they picked. Over, over the one you wanted in the, uh, northwest side of, of the, uh, property. Which is right near the, uh, residential area. And really, if you're in a residential area and, and things start spilling out. It, it's, it's really becomes a, uh, problem for the residents. And, uh, I just, uh, I just like that area, the front area. The, uh, the east side, uh, the south, southeast side, that much better.
Well, they have retention on the southeast and southwest. On the southwest, they put it underground. And it goes down past, um. Howard Hannah in back of their, their property. And the, but what I'm getting at is that I, I think that. The way the property is developed, they, they've left a, whatever it is, a fifth of the property completely undeveloped at the northern end of this property. They could have moved everything north. Um. I, I think, I think we're gonna have problems there because of that steep slope, but maybe not, we'll see. But they didn't, they don't have to, they certainly don't have to put the, uh, the retention pond right in front of the building, that's, that's.
RJ or Ted, is there a way that you can make this, they can, we could grant it as an exception? So that we have to make them go through some hoops before they throw it up there? Um, and because.
I don't see why you'd want it on the front to begin with.
Well, again, as, as RJ said, there, there might be some, you can't make water run uphill, or you know, you can only, you don't wanna. You know, I, my experience in my former job is I have a couple places that have ponds in the front. And you do that because you don't want to put tanks in because that doesn't comply with the codes as far as, you know, B M Ps and all that good stuff. And, but the only way to do it is when you have parking where it's at, sometimes that's where the pond has to be. Um, and, you know, you make them, again, drive past Franklin, Ted, we have a pretty big one right there now. We've had one in front on the other corner since the school was renovated in ninety-nine. Um, I've never really received any complaints about them, again, not actively there anymore, but, um. You know, but it, it was just what the pography told us we needed to do, and that was the only way we could comply with what the county, you know. Requires now with all that kind of stuff, you know, so.
Well, you know, Rob, uh, i- if I were developing this piece of property. And I looked at it and I went up to the northern edge, there's about a two and a half foot, maybe a little hu- higher retaining wall. Between the northern edge of the property and the next lot. Then as you go south, the difference gets bigger and bigger, so it's twelve, fifteen feet high at the south end. You could very easily, well, you could, it, it's gonna cost money, but you could cut that site down. Quite a bit and eliminate the fact that it's the only site on the street that pops up. Out of the, uh, the, uh, pops up o- above the street itself. And try to make it look decent. But even if they don't do that, they can, they still have plenty of room to do a decent site plan, and I, I just don't think they did one. I, I think it's. And I think there, I think there, um, the revision. Was designed to save them details on what they did before. I, I just don't think it was done very well at all.
Again, I'm, I'm saying.
There's, I mean, there's site plans that I think are very nice and they did a good job, but I just don't think this is one of them.
Well, so, uh, you know, I, I understand that this is an issue that's been really important as we've discussed this development. But, um, at least for the, the proposed code clarification purposes. The ship has sailed for that lot, um, so.
Well, that is true.
Yeah.
And even if you, even if you kept the existing, uh, uh, definition. I would el- eliminate the, the words and landscaped. Thirty-five foot front yard shall be grassed, leave it at that. Because they use landscape to, to, to defend their pond, and I think that was crazy as hell, but that's what they did.
So I think, excuse me, um. I like the things that, um, some of the things that points that RJ is making in that, um. We have a huge water problem and we have got to get creative with managing, um, our water, our stormwater runoff. Um, our lots are not flat in southwestern Pennsylvania, our dirt is not black, it's red. So we have a lot of things that are against us, um, with, with our water. So I, I think we need to keep flexibility in our codes because sites are different. And I think the traditional grassed front yard is, um. Not what a lot of people are looking for now. I think people want, um, well, I think it's much more appealing to have landscaping. Instead of just a flat grass, it's very, you know, nineteen sixties kind of way of, of doing things. And, and I think we have a much more active code enforcement, um, personnel now to, to keep some of these things. Um, the way they're supposed to be. And, um, if you look online at some of these, um, retention ponds. They look really attractive and they're interesting, and it's not just grass or it's not just a burning bush. You know, it's, it looks nice, um.
Well, we did a, we did a state of the art retention pond down at Walgreens a number of years ago, and I would, I would suggest you go look at that.
Um, then I would, you know what, call, um, um, Jeff Shaneman, and he will go right down and see about that. That's the only way that code can enforce things is if people report them. So I would recommend that you call them. If he isn't there in violation of their, uh, detention pond, he will be on that.
It may not be, it may not be. But the, the other one, of course, is the, uh, the one that, uh, is over at, um. Is that Divine Providence or Renccension, Divine?
Yeah, right at the corner of Duncan and Babcock.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that's about as bad as you can get, I think.
But that's, that's huge. That's not this small thing that we're talking about here. Right, I mean.
It's still, it's, it's the same issue, though. It's still a detention pond, it's still owned by a huge owner, and they don't maintain it. It's still the same issue. Now, in a case like that, because it's so big, you do have to do what Rob said and, and wo- work with the, um. The topography a little more. I mean, this site that we were looking at tonight is basically a flat site. It drops off some in the back. But, but there is, you could put a, you could put, um, a retention pond almost anywhere on that site and it would work. And, and the dev- and the developer has an opportunity to make it flatter if he wants. He can, he can shape that site. It's not hard.
It's incredibly expensive.
Now, it, what's the expensive part, the expensive part of shaping a site is taking the dirt off the site.
Right.
That's the expensive part. In a, in a, this case here, they can move dirt around and shape the site whatever way they want.
So, uh, again, unless we're expecting the dialysis clinic to get demolished at some point in the near distant future. You know, th- this code is going to. If that was incorporated into the zoning code, it would be enforced for any other development in that district going forward, so.
Say that again.
If, if this code were to be adopted, it would be enforced for any other future development. So, you know, regardless of the conditions of that site, it's off the table, assuming that that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, in, in, in this is something that, you know, I was kind of looking at the map, um, of this district earlier. And, you know, Ted, I think you and I may have spoken about this when, when the plan was moving sort of through the approval process. There are very few, if any, really lots left in the R C district, at least undeveloped lots. Um, that are anywhere near the size of that site, um.
Well, that was three lots, I mean.
Right.
Even so, the, the whole idea of this pro- this, uh, zoning order, one of the ideas of it was to try to get. Developers to consolidate properties, just like this one, so that they could build it, so that they could, oh yeah, if you look at the, um. The sizes of things.
Yes.
That was, that's what was intended. Now, you can't actually say do that, but i- if you put some dimensional requirements down, that was what was intended.
Well, and, and that was kind of something that, um, when we get to the building placement point, you know, I, I think through this, this previous development process. Um, a really good point was raised and, and Ted, you've reflected it here, that if we don't have a setback maximum. There's no guarantee that the buildings are going to be pulled up closer to the street if that's the aesthetic intention of the district. So setting a maximum, you know, definitely could be beneficial, um. My concern, and this is just eyeballing, you know, it's not survey accurate data, but it's pretty good. Um, just looking at a lot of the lots on our, our, you know, internal G I S. And I might even, I mean, if I, if I un-screen share this for a second, I might, you know, if I take a moment, I might be able to even pull that up, um. Most of the lots are not as deep as sort of that auto zone Howard Hannah. Um, and now potentially D C I stretch. And so with, I, I mean, I would, I would have to actually run the numbers, um, to be one hundred percent sure. But I really question with a hundred foot setback in the back, thirty-five foot front yard in the front. Um, you know, putting all these parameters on, I don't know which of these properties are gonna flip. Um. Just under, and I, I know we, we had a vision and I understand what we're getting at. But it seems like it's kind of struggling to take with the existing properties.
Yeah, I, I agree, but, uh, so what, what, Ted, what you're trying to do is set a fifty foot maximum on the front yard?
Yeah.
So why, why couldn't you do just, uh, um. Uh, modify, uh, thirteen point twenty-two, uh, point zero two dimensional str- standards. Under C, uh, they have front yard that minimum thirty, thirty-five foot and thirty-five foot. And then put someplace, uh, a front yard depth maximum fifty foot.
We could do that.
Yeah, yeah, if, to, if we were to include a, of, a maximum yard, I agree, that makes good sense to go.
That's fine. I mean, that's basically what this says, so that's, that, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, I, I, I didn't get that as what it said, but, uh, yeah, if, if you're looking to make a maximum, just put in the natural area.
Okay.
That fix seems pretty easy, and I suggest we do it. The other points you were concerned about, Ted, where's no parking in front. I think that can be clearly added. And then, and then you also had a concern that landscaping should not include retention ponds. And maybe we could say that landscaping permitted, but retention ponds would need expect, a special exception of some kind or pre-approval.
All right.
Wait, and then, uh, there, there's currently a thirteen twenty-eight point oh three front yard, uh. Or, uh, provision, that says no vehicle, veh- vehicular parking is permitted within the front yard, so that's already taken care of. Uh, uh, it then goes on to say a thirty-five foot front yard shall be grassed and landscaped. Uh, since we're going to a maximum of fifty yards, we would just take out thirty-five feet, I mean, uh, thirty-five feet. And that would read the front yard shall be grassed and landscaped.
The problem is you run into those definitions in the, uh, beginning of the code where the front yard is, is, is a, uh. Legal term for the setback, I, I think.
No, it's, it's the edge of the building, it's the edge of the building, that's the, uh, the.
Well, that's what I would say, too. I mean, the normal person would say that the front yard goes from the street to the edge of the building, right?
The front of the building, but that's what the code says.
Yeah, I, I think the ki- the confusion was the fact that that section. Thirteen twenty-eight oh three as written, in that second sentence. It then says the thirty-five foot front yard shall be grassed. So, you know, perhaps just deleting the thirty-five foot words would make it, you know, completely clear.
Yeah, yeah, you, you could take that out. I would say something like the front yard shall be grassed and landscaped according to the code. Or something like that, because we have buffer requirements in there.
Right.
Uh, we need to get something in there that says, however, that we can't put a, um. Retention pond in the front yard.
Yeah, a- again, I'm personally not comfortable recommending it, so that's.
I don't recommend.
So it's out there.
It's, it's hard to believe, but I, I agree, yeah, I don't recommend that.
Well, I think part of the reason, the, the, the issue is the green water versus the gray water, right? They're trying to have more rain gardens and as underground structures and.
Did, did I just hear someone else say gray water? Oh, you were paying attention.
Uh, you know, so, so just the position of the lot may not afford to that, but that's something that we can address. You know, so, so just the position of the lot may not afford to that, but that's something that we can address uh, in our view and maybe makes suggestions to move that to the rear yard or where elsewhere on the property.
Well, we made suggestions this, this time and it didn't do any good. Unless we have it in the code, our suggestions are merely that.
And I will say, I mean, ultimately with, with this most recent plan that we're discussing, you know, between our engineered, engineer Dan's, you know, comments and review and just sort of the different design discussions we had. I mean, it did make most sense, design wise, that, that was not, it was not like from an engineering perspective, we requested they move it and they didn't. That was kind of really what was bearing out on the engineering math as favorable on that particular site plan, so. I'm just taking some notes here for the dimensional standard section.
Thirteen twenty eight point zero two.
Yes, yeah, that's, I, I have the be added, that that section would actually make good sense. Yeah, I, I, I think you, the idea of the front yard maximum is, is good for sure. I do have some concerns overall with the setbacks that we have in the depth, you know, how, how likely these properties are to actually turn over at this point with the rest of the dimensional standards on there. It's it's, it's it's tough to, to feel super comfortable with any other further dimensional limits when, you know, we've, we've got the parking that's basically got to go in the back and the side. More limited in where you can place the building. I know that that's for a, a district, you know, sort of cohesion goal. But a, a lot of these lots are really not that deep. I mean, you, you end up with a kind of a rectangle, like a very long rectangle for buildable area, even in the thirty five foot and a hundred rear yard setback, or excuse me, rear foot setback. But I, I, I think it's a good idea overall. I just think that the dimensions of this district in general might benefit from a little TLC if we're realistically expecting any of these properties over time to be redesigned more in, in the vision of what this chapter set out originally.
I'm, I'm not sure where you're going with this, RJ. Are, are you saying you don't agree with the fifty foot setback?
Bottom line, bottom line, bottom line, RJ.
Yeah, okay, so my bottom line is that I don't even know if this is a material discussion in the immediate future, because I don't think that anybody's gonna take the cost on of redeveloping the pavement C on the other side of the street.
Well, but it's, it's an easy, it's an easy change to make, which would have eliminated this problem. And while we don't foresee new problems, it's an easy change to make to eliminate, foresee.
Well, I, I don't think that a maximum front yard setback would have solved the stormwater question.
No, it wouldn't. That's, that's, that's different. It, it eliminated the parking problem because now parking can't be in the front yard.
Well, that's, that's already, that's already addressed elsewhere in the code. The maximum, the maximum building setback is not, you know, I think for clarity purposes, deleting from thirteen twenty eight oh three, that just the phrasing of thirty five foot for the grassed and landscape can make that crystal clear to anybody reading it in the future. What I'm getting at more is this building placement section down here that Ted has proposed, which again, front yard maximum idea that makes sense if we're trying to pull, pull buildings up to the street. I just don't know who's gonna pull a building up to the street at this point in this district without prohibitive cost, to be honest.
Well, the last two new buildings were, were done that way. Howard Hannah was a new building and so was the advanced auto parts.
Let me load the map up and I will, instead of just telling you all.
And the other, the other two buildings,
I will show.
First building, which is the it's a photography studio, they gotta put a million bucks into that, that project.
And, and how many others? I mean, but I understand, like, I, I, I I am fully behind the idea of crafting a district in, with your vision of where you're going in mind, rather than what's actually there.
What about the executive office building? Where would they, where would they put their parking if they were required to? If, if it weren't, if they weren't grandfathered in, would, would they be able to get their parking someplace else in the front yard? Then they have it in the front yard now. Could they put it someplace else?
Who are we talking about?
The executive office going up, uh, pretty close to Perry Mark. Uh, do you know where it is across?
Okay, yeah.
Cross over Dima.
Yes, yes.
Your own office, Ted.
That's my old office. I was on the third floor there.
Oh my.
Fifteen years, twenty years, something like that, twenty.
Let me get these tax parcels to show up at, at this scale and then I'll put this on. So y'all can see where, where I'm thinking here. Or, or, you know, if somebody's seeing something I'm not, I'm all ears.
Just think if you were trying to negotiate a one point nine trillion dollar relief bill.
Okay.
Okay, so this is kind of what I'm what I'm thinking here. So, I mean, this, this captures almost all the district, so we're gonna stick with this.
A little bit more?
Yeah, the, and the ones down here are pretty much developed. This up here is the site that we were discussing. This little slice right here of this parcel immediately north of it is just developed right here, presumably because of the topography. But, I mean, you can see if you pretend that this is one big parcel, that dwarfs almost every other site except for these couple parcels here. I would have to double check and make sure the photography studio is indeed a hundred, or I mean, yeah, a hundred feet rear setback. It probably is with some of the parking back there. You know, but most of these are not, are probably not much more than half the size in depth. These ones over here, some of them are even smaller. It's, it's quite a challenge uh, to you know, play ball with really any of these parcels that are here.
These first three properties that you looked at, I can't, there's, wow, that's hard to read. Where it says RC, right above West, West Fairfield, Fairview.
Fairview, yep. So here's the Howard Hannah site right here. And then the three properties that were involved in DCI, is my, is my pointer working?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so these are over here.
Down below West Fairview.
Yes.
That's the, that's the auto, uh, whatever, advanced auto. That was, that was, that, that started out as two and a half lots. And then the one down below it was one and a half lots. They split a lot between them. And, and then the, the, the photography studio is right, I think it's right there at West Sandal, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, it is. Now, this is a question I'm gonna have to ask, because I was not here when it happened. Were there existing businesses on those properties?
Down here?
Yeah, in the, this stretch here.
You know, I know that the first two lots were residences. The, the studio, the photography studio and whatever the next lot is. I don't know about, I don't know about the third lot. Where, I can't remember what was there, if anything. I'm not sure anything was there.
Well, that, that would make a, a little more sense, because these, um, I'll see if I can reduce the opacity here, so y'all can see it a little easier. Yeah, it's a bit better. These are basically residences. From the back here. Ooh. I mean, again, this is not survey accurate, but it looks like just barely the edge of that is over the hundred foot setback. Now, and, and it, it could, under this minimum, be pulled up a couple feet technically, but that residence may have been just essentially a, a converted, you know.
Yeah, they were, that one was there. That, that sat there for years and years without being developed.
So, it, a lot this type of size, you know, you're looking at the buildable area here. There, there, you can't do anything within. Those, those markers want to follow you everywhere. This is the distance on this, a lot of this size that is just, you know, completely a no. The front right about there is thirty five feet. So you've, you've got right here that you could build a little box. Or, you know, you could try and consolidate some parcels, which I, I understand that was the hope. But considering on some of these, at least, I mean, I, I know these parcels right here, which are across from the Howard Hannah, those just sold to another business that I think is gonna be there for quite a while. A lot of these other ones, you know, unless somebody's demolishing multiple office buildings and probably going for some sort of variance. For size, you know, but, but that's the problem. If we, I I need, I would need more time to actually give a useful answer to what I would suggest for setbacks, which I think is overall kind of part of a process that I'd, I'd really like to get going sooner than later is kind of a a refresh of all of this, but since we're discussing these, these setback issues now.
Well, dialysis.
That you needed a variance to develop in, in almost any parcel is not necessarily what I'd recommend.
Well, dialysis clinic is, where is that parcel? I'm losing track. There it is.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm so used to moving around this thing all day. I apologize if I'm jumping around too much.
It's one right here.
Here we go.
Yeah, right there. That one, that one's like three hundred feet deep. So that one's not difficult to develop at all.
Right, and, and I mean, and it did.
And you can see that there's three properties there.
Right.
The top property, which is that skinny one, was, had a house on it that I think touched the lot line. Pretty much.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised. I can see sort of an out parcel right here on the satellite, but but I mean, these, you know, aside from the fact that there were three lots, kind of just hanging out there. Most of the others to turn into something else would require a lot of demo. And you know what? If, if that's the goal ultimately, that's the goal. I'm just not sure that I see too many more situations like this happening.
Maybe, maybe not. What's further north in this? Any, anything?
Not, not much. There's like the sheets, pretty much. This, this parcel that you know, has a bit of a parking lot on it. These kind of mystery parcels to me, they let, they let out on Casa Grande.
Yeah, there's houses on, they're on Casa Grande there. This is a, this is a really tough property here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think these are probably in the future could be returned to an R two designation unless.
Probably should be, yes.
Oh, RJ, are these, um, are some of these, uh, these ordinances, the setbacks, these, are these all part gonna be relooked at as, when we update our zoning map?
Yeah, so, so that's something that kind of been trying to, to tie in this overall conversation is, y- you know, this is just one district out of eighteen, maybe nineteen seventeen?
Something like that.
Somewhere between seventeen and nineteen districts that we have. And a lot of that structure was put in quite some time ago, probably predates even a lot of our long-term members on the planning commission. And you know, look, actually taking the dimensions on all these different districts and saying, all right, how is this gonna work in practice, I think is, is something that you know, maybe more holistically, we should be looking at. Just kind of trying to bring everything into the, the twenty first century, really. And, and districts like the RC district, you know, they, they may, there may be some adjustments to make sure that we're enabling the right kind of development going forward. It may be that some structures of things don't really change much, but I mean, this is something that I think is pretty immediately gonna be coming down the pike within the next year or two, that, that we're really gonna be thinking about these things a different way. And so I think, you know, part of that is this whole setback discussion.
So, RJ's, the bottom line she was getting ready to say was that we are gonna be looking at all of the districts and all of these numbers all over again in the next year. So what would be helpful to me, it seems like, and maybe you, RJ, was to, for people to put all these suggestions together. And then you can have all these, so when we get to that part, we can look at these. But starting to change them now and then changing them again in a year, maybe. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's really like, I, I don't, I'm gonna take this map down now, so we can just all look at each other while we talk. I'm not opposed at all to a front yard maximum setback. I think for what we're trying to do in a district like this, it really makes good sense. But with the data and, you know, kind of the thinking through that we've done right now compared to maybe what a much broader process would be, where we really take a look at all these different moving parts at the same time. We might be just kind of repeating our work, you know. So I, I think that, that especially something like this discussion about the maximum and where the building lines end up and where we want this district to go, like, those are really good things to put in the foundation of an overall sort of reboot, if you will, of how we, how we look at zoning. But I would.
What prompted the reboot and, and at least for me, it's the first I've ever heard of it. What, what is, what is forcing the reboot?
Uh, yes, about a year now of me trying to slog through the zoning code.
Is this part of the comprehensive plan that was also kicked out two years ago?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. Um, the way that that I kind of think of, uh, your zoning ordinance and the way that your subdivision land development design works with comprehensive plans is when you're doing a comp plan, which, you know, about every ten years is kind of a national standard. That's really like where you put all your hopes and dreams for your community, right? That's where you want to see things go. And updating your zoning, sort of in light of all of that thinking and, and hopes and dreams that you put in your comp plan, that's really how you, you make it happen. If your zoning isn't in place in a way that's flexible and comfortable with what you've laid out in the comp plan, it's really hard to make those things come to fruition. And we've had a couple comp plans since we last really took a comprehensive look at our zoning ordinance, so.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this, and I'll be somewhat cynical here, is that comprehensive plan was a big whoop to do two or three years ago, and I haven't heard diddly about it since. And so if, if this new zoning plan has the same trajectory, we might near, might not hear much about it in the next two or three years.
Well, the end result of a new zoning plan is that we adopt a new zoning ordinance.
Well, sure, you wouldn't go through it if you didn't want to do that, but what's the realistic chance of that happening?
Hundred percent.
Really?
If I'm staying sane and here, hundred percent.
Okay, you're more optimistic.
Building ordinance, what do you mean, RJ?
She said zoning, zoning, zoning.
No, she said building ordinance. What, what did you?
Did I? Well, if I said building, I meant zoning.
Okay, all right.
Oh, subdivision and, okay, I, I see what you, yeah, yeah, okay, all right. I figured, I backtracked and figured it out. Subdivision and land development. Uh, that section in our code is located under part thirteen, which is the zoning ordinance. You know, overall chapter, it's called land development and subdivision regulations. First time I have ever seen the saldos written backwards so that the acronym is LIDSR. But that's kind of another thing that goes hand in hand is, you know, getting, getting the saldo formatted a little more what you tend to see in modern day, you know, that sidewalk standards, road construction, all that good stuff that goes right along with the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, RJ's gonna put this forward at the council meeting on Monday, so you'll hear about it. You guys got a little tantalizing tidbit tonight.
Coming to you first, you're the planning commission.
She's actually gonna be presenting this at Monday's meeting to council to get the nod to move forward on it.
Okay.
How will you proceed on that? What's the what's the operating procedure, I guess? What do you do to, to get going on that?
Yeah, so, um, what typically one writes an RFP, or at least sort of a general sketch of this is the, the work expectation. One writes an RFP, um, or at least sort of a general sketch of this is the, the work expectations that we have. You get a quote from hopefully more than one planning firm, you know, if they, if they see your. Um, proposal and go, oh, that sounds like something I'd like to be a part of. You know, based on what the quotes and, and the different qualifications of the firm are, usually staff reviews prevents recommendations to council. Um, and then presumably, you know, if council's still on board. They would move forward to get under contract with that planning firm. Um, and then, you know, it's usually about a year and a half process where I would be working very closely with them. They would be reporting back regularly, you know, both to the planning commission, to council. Um, if there's a steering committee, they would also, it's, you know, it's, it's a very similar process to the comp plan. It's just that it's kind of addressing different things in the community. Um, and making sure that, you know, there's the groundwork there, that we can do those things in the comp plan. So. I would hope that we're at least on our way. With the firm contracted before the end of the year, perhaps even before summer. Yeah, I, I think this is really, it's just kind of time to hit the ground running, you know, there's so many different little things that come up and I just kind of go, ugh. Like, this is gonna be one whole discussion about this, this moving part that. You change something over here, you break three things over here. And it's just gotten to the point where you can't keep track of all those little things anymore. It's, it's. Think, you know, di- districts may look very similar to what we have today. It's not like the whole map is gonna get flipped on its head and all of a sudden there's gonna be a mall in the middle of people's road or something. But, you know, it's kind of looking at the districts and making sure. Is this working for us? Do we, for example, need eight commercial districts? No. What, what are we really trying to empower ourselves as a community to do with this? So that's gonna be the big picture goal.
Okay. So what are you gonna do with uh, these uh, RC recommendations? Are you gonna take a look and come back with something else, or what are we gonna do? Are we gonna do nothing?
Well, I do have a running file of like the, the. Big ticket things that we absolutely need to address, um, when we're taking sort of this big picture look at zoning. What, huh?
This would, this would, these recommendations would be considered in your big pictures?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, and, you know, again, if there's anything else that you've been thinking about in any other district. Please, I, I would love to have that feedback, um, because it's a lot easier to go into that with kind of an idea and a plan. Than to just crack open the book and go, okay, you know, so this is definitely helpful.
Alright. We have anything else on the agenda, the approval of the other minutes? Is there anything else that we should be discussing tonight? Before we approve the minutes?
I don't have anything additional. But, uh, defer to the group.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay, then the next item is the approval of the January fifth, two thousand twenty one meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Which one?
Greg.
Greg, okay, Greg's gonna second it and, and Lamar made the motion, is that right?
I did.
All in favor? I, I see we have general public comments, but we've been doing it by project, so I don't think there'd be any of those.
No one here.
So I guess we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I moved to adjourn.
Oh, man, who, who got the quickfire on that? That was Dan for one and who was two?
Funny, that one, that one didn't have any problem at all. I'm not sure.
Alright, Lamar, you were the one that I heard yell first, so you're two.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. I guess we're done for tonight.
We're done, we're done.
What time is it?
See what comes in for next month. We might have Don Pol coming back.
Oh, really? What's he got to next month?